It is summertime.
Hey, if I could do it from here, he can do it. No, I'm kidding.
We appreciate you, Laura.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Alright Chairman, it is seven thirty.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the Bolden Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the Township Clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star and Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Yeah.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, yeah.
Nice to you Kalpech. Mr. Blasnight here, Mr. Hadaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caneely, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, there are. The application of Arnaldo Parraza fourteen thirty-eight West Fourth Street is adjourned until September eighth two thousand twenty-two with no further notice by the applicant. The second change is J.R. Ventures LLC one thirty-six Eleventh Street that is postponed until August eleventh and they must notice. Those are the changes that I have to see.
Thank you, Mr. Caneely. Let us proceed to item number six, twenty-two dash ZB dash forty-five V, Michelle Lombardi. Is Ms. Lombardi present?
I am.
Hi, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Michelle Lombardi, seventy-six Carlton Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi. Could you tell me to the board what you'd like to do here?
I'd like to put a patio cover for an existing concrete patio in my backyard.
Okay, I, I, you broke up a little bit when I heard you. You, you said you wanted to put a, a roof of some sort over the existing patio?
Stella Lee?
Patio cover.
Join the meeting.
Roof over an existing concrete patio in the backyard.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you want the name of the check, Mr. Hinterstein?
Yes, Henry. Henry, you had any comments about this application?
He's logging on now, give him one second. Alright.
There you go. Henry, unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, what was that, Sean?
I, I was wondering if you had any comments or questions about this application?
We're on the Michelle Lombardi application, Crokeville Avenue?
I do not. Let's see here. Nope, we're not.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments for this application? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
No one? Okay.
Uh, Ms. Lombardi had requested that we prepare a resolution for adoption at tonight's meeting, so I have a resolution of approval that is before you, if we need a motion and a second and a roll call.
Okay. With the public portion closed at this point, I would make a motion to approve this application? Can I ask a second? Thank you. Please call the roll, Laura?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka? Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardi, your application's been approved and the resolution has been adopted.
Very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
You also.
Let's move on down to item number seven, twenty-two dash CB dash thirteen V, Craig Myrna? Is Mr. Myrna present?
Yes.
Mr. Myrna, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Craig Myrna, three sixty-five Matt Lars Lane, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
I'd like to add addition of a Fraser level.
Mr. Myrna, uh, this is Andrew Allrick for the applicant. Um, Mr. Myrna, um, why don't you explain to the board what the house looks like now and then, and the improvements that you're gonna make?
So what I wanna do is add second floor, master bedroom, bathroom, two bedrooms and a bathroom to improve the, uh, house.
And Mr. Myrna, um, we're seeking variance relief tonight. Um, there's, uh, various, uh, requirements that we're asking the board to waive. Are any of those requirements that we're asking the board to waive, is that anything created by your current project or were those already existing when you bought the house?
Already existing.
So for example, there's, um, there's a requirement of a fifteen-foot side yard setback, um, and you're proposing a four-foot side yard setback, but that's because the, the structure is already four feet from the, the setback, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, similarly with the one hundred-foot lot width that is required and your proposed seventy-seven feet, that is because the existing struc-, the existing lot width is seventy-seven feet, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Allrick, I believe the board understands that the rest of the, uh, the variances are existing.
Understood. Thank you. Uh, would you like us to address the memorandum from, uh, Mr. Hinterstein's?
Yes, that would be great.
In cutting to the chase, my, my client takes, has really no issue with any of these items, but, um, number three, um, the request that there be a, uh, a step in from the side of the building, I think would change the character of these improvements so much that, uh, I don't know if the, um, maybe the applicant can explain why that's a difficult requirement.
Yes, so what I wanna do is put the master bedroom on that side that's encroaching that property, but as we're going right on top, if I move that over, then I lose that whole master suite, which I don't really wanna do.
We understand. Henry, do you have an issue with that?
Oh, yeah, I, uh, the issue is again, I, I understand what the intent is. The, the problem is, is that you have an existing home here that's only four feet from the side property line. And now what we're doing is we're putting a second story, increasing the mass, and now instead of just one story, uh, one-story structure adjacent to the property line, four feet away. Now we're gonna have a half foot, you know, a two and a, two-story, uh, structure that's, uh, right on the property line practically. So, again, typically in these situations, uh, just because there's an existing, um, structure that's perhaps, you know, closer to the front yard setback or closer to the side yard setback, understandable, it was there, he didn't purchase the home, he didn't build a home like that, but to exacerbate the situation by increasing the, the mass that you have in a non-conforming location, you know, I, I, that's the issue. Um, again, you know, and I didn't look at it this close, but from, from what I'm seeing is it, it appears that addition, two-story addition is just over a portion of the house, it's not completely over the, the rest of the house, uh, that's to the right-hand side. So perhaps that could be shifted, perhaps the, the, that, those bedrooms could be, you know, switched around, uh, in, in a way that, you know, won't exacerbate the, the side yard setback. Um, and I'm not telling him he has to necessarily redesign it here, but, you know, I think there should be some exploration to see if that addition could be somehow modified so that it steps back away from the side property line.
Mr. Myrna, I will tell you that, uh, ninety-nine percent of the time, we follow the advice and the recommendations of our, uh, township, uh, engineers and experts. So if there was some way you could, uh, live with the recommendation, um, I think you would find a very favorable application this evening? You wanna take a minute to think about it, or?
I can't move over to the left side because it has a, um, my dining room is there and it has a vaulted ceiling, so I would lose that ceiling height. And my walls are only seven foot on that side, so I would lose that whole space.
Mr. Myrna is a, um, a home improvement contractor, um, so it, the, obviously the aesthetics of the home and what it looks like to the public reflects on his business. But, which I think he's, him and his family have been in that business in this town for, for generations.
Yep, born and raised.
Why don't you do this? It, it sounds to me that there has not been a discussion with Henry in terms of whatever alternatives were considered and why they were rejected. It might be behoove everyone to sit down and talk about how you went through this and why all the, um, the, the issues that Henry ra-, has raised, uh, are there. I, I think it might be, make sense to take thirty days and, and talk it over.
I, I agree with Mr. Chadwick. Quite honestly.
And just look, and just before you make that decision, I mean, I'm looking at this and I understand that, you know, aesthetically and perhaps you prefer to have a vaulted ceiling in your dining room. Again, maybe it's a matter of picking your choosing. If you want the addition, step it back, perhaps you put a normal ceiling in the dining room. You have all of that room on the dining room that you could technically probably move the, the second floor over if that ceiling wasn't vaulted. It really allows you to improve on that setback, and I'm not saying you have to do it completely. Uh, again, maybe it just needs a couple of feet, it certainly should be an improvement instead of making this, uh, worse. That's what I'm telling you, you know, um.
I just wanna know why it's an issue on that side if it's already been a house already there. Are you worried about?
The, the house is there now, how high is the roof? Fifteen feet? Sixteen, it's one story. Now, now you're trying to make it two stories over there. So, you know, it's like anything, so now residents in that house or that homeowner, whether it's current or in the future, if they're having a single-story mass ha-, in one-story house, four feet from their property line, you're blocking more of the air light and open space that this house is sort of gonna, you know, have because you're, you're, you're creating a more solid and a higher wall on that, um, that property line.
We'll, we'll carry the, uh, if, if there's no objection by the board, we can, uh, a- adopt the board member's suggestion to, uh, to work on the issue with the township's professionals, um, over the next thirty days.
That's, that's.
So the next meeting is August eleventh, uh, that, that's acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Allrick.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we're going to adjourn the Craig Myrna application until August eleventh with no further notice. Uh, anybody here on that matter, it will be heard on August eleventh with no further notice. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move on to item number eight, twenty-two dash ZB dash forty-three V, Christian Spangler and Marcella Salandriga?
Yes, I'm Christine Spangler.
Mr. Spangler, can I, could you raise your hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Uh, could, we'll have your, excuse me, could I have your name and address, please?
Sure, Christine Spangler, one fifteen Walnut Street.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Um, we want to replace our existing front stairs and also the retaining wall in the front of the house as well as the fence that's there. Not moving anything, just where it is now.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein.
Yeah, Henry, can you go over your site impact on this?
I mean, again, with this particular application, again, the, I understand it's an older home and the wall was placed inside the, um, inside the right-of-way. So it falls one or two feet inside the right-of-way. Uh, so if the wall's being replaced, I, I don't see why the wall can't be relocated outside the right-of-way, move just one or two feet back. We have an issue with it right on the property line, do have an issue with it in the right-of-way because if a car were to hit it, um, then it becomes an issue that now the township has, uh, um, may have some liability, uh, when it comes to that wall located in the township right-of-way. So, again, we, as you know from the past, I don't, I typically don't, uh, give variances for things to be located, structures, walls, anything of that nature to be located in the township right-of-way, uh, for residential properties or commercial properties.
No, I agree.
Walls being re-, oh, that, I, I don't see why it couldn't be rebuilt in a conforming location. Step back another foot and a half, whatever it is to keep it outside of that right-of-way line. Otherwise, I don't see really any big issues with this application. It's really just that, um, it's that issue.
Okay. Ms. Spangler, if you're okay with that, I think we can move ahead with a vote after we talk to the public.
Okay, I, I guess my only concern is then the stairs are still gonna meet up with the wall, so it's, wouldn't that still be in the right-of-way with the stairs? I don't, I don't know how that would work, 'cause the way my stairs are, the way the stairs are now, it meets the wall exactly, so if I move the wall back, wouldn't the stairs still be further out? I'm not sure.
Steps off your house, come down, then there's a, I believe, a little bit of a walk and then another set of steps where the wall is. So that space would maybe be a little bit more compacted. You might have the steps of the house, shorter walk, and you still could have the, then the steps coming down connected to the wall. Nothing would be in the right-of-way. It really is just compressing the amount of space between your existing stairs, which I know are also way out into the front yard. So that walk in between the two steps, the steps would just be compressed, I think, a little bit. And again, I don't think you're that far off with the wall. I think you're maybe only a foot and a half into the right-of-way. Or maybe it's have to be pushed back slightly.
So you're suggesting about two feet? 'Cause when, you know, when the contractor wants to do it.
Wherever the property line is, you can go up to the property line, just not within the right-of-way, yeah.
Okay, I'm confused. Where, where is the property line end? I'm sorry, I really don't know.
Typically, it's about ten feet from the face of the curb.
Okay.
Survey should show that. You might wanna get your surveyor to stake it out based on your, your survey. This way you know for sure.
Okay, so there would be no, um, one of the things that's on this is the, the fence, so would it be okay to replace it with a six-foot fence?
Yeah, I don't see any issue with, with your fence and the location that it's in. I know it requires a variance because of location, but the way the house is oriented, set back far enough that in line with the, uh, it's further back than the actual front corner of your house. I, I just don't see a huge issue with the way the fence is situated right now um, in this particular location and the way the houses are sort of, uh, oriented on that, on an angle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, comments? Any other members know? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve the application. Okay, call the roll.
Excuse me, lose my voice. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Or Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Spangler, your application as amended has been approved. As amended means you're gonna rebuild the wall outside of the right-of-way. Um, we'll memorialize a resolution in our next meeting and mail that to you. You don't need to be there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good night, ma'am.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Let's move on to item number nine, twenty-two dash ZB dash forty-seven V, James Fuller?
Is Mr. Fuller present?
You're muted, Mr. Fuller.
Yes, I am. I'm present.
Mr. Fuller, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
James Fuller, sixty-nine Wynans Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Uh, yes. Me and my wife bought this property in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, my wife passed away six years ago. All my children are grown. We've been in Piscataway uh, mo-, all their lives and, uh, everybody's grown now, so I'm, I'm selling the house. I currently have a buyer, but the, um, the garage, it was converted to a bedroom when we bought the house. And the shed is a foot and a half off of the property lawn, and I'm just asking for relief so I could, uh, process the sale of my house.
Uh, how many off-street parking spots do you have, Mr. Fuller?
Off? I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Uh, how many off-street parking spots do you have? Cars can you park in your driveway?
Uh, two.
Mr. Henry, we'll talk to Mr. Hinterstein.
Yes, Henry, do you have any comments or questions about this?
Well, we, there's a couple of things that, that township's planning on doing some future roadwork there, and they're looking for a temporary construction easement, um, along Wynans Avenue. That's one item. Um, like, is, is there any reason why the shed can't be relocated to a conforming location?
Oh, well, I mean, I'm, I'm selling the property and, uh, I, I, I would have to take the shed down. You know, I could, I could take it, it could be taken down.
But it's not in a condition where it could just be relocated?
Oh, I would, I would say no, no.
And then the, the other issue is, is that the, the RSIS requires, uh, two and a half spaces for a residential home, uh, of four bedrooms. So the additional bedroom that is being created, um, in the house or that was converted from the garage, uh, resulting in the need for more off-street parking for this application, which it appears there's only two spaces currently off-street, and I was wondering if they could, it appears that you might be able to add to the driveway, to the right of the driveway.
Well, there's, there's, there's a, there's a, like a forty-foot tree there and a utility pole. So the, the wide in the driveway to the right would, would require the, m- m- removing the utility pole and the tree.
Well, the utility pole's a little bit further down, but if you tell me that that tree's in the way, um, and there's no way to move it the left of the property?
To the left? The le-, to the left of the, to the, to the left of the driveway?
Yeah, or a little bit.
No, that's, that's the, that's the, uh, there's a, there's a walkway. No, no, there's not enough, there's not enough space. You would have to see that. I mean, it's a typical, it's a typical buy level. Uh, there's not enough space going to the left.
I mean, it seems like there's some constraints here for the driveway. I, I don't have a issue. It appears that there is on-street parking, uh, available.
Yes.
One of the whole, my biggest issue was you have any issue providing the township with the ten-foot construction easement part of the property?
What is that? I, I don't, I don't quite understand what that is. I, I know where the easement is, but the, when you said.
Yeah, it would be a temporary construction easement, so the town in the future plans on maybe redoing the curb, perhaps adding sidewalks. And right-of-way that's there is sufficient, but in case they need a little bit extra room during construction, uh, that it can access the area, um, then restore it back in kind uh, after the construction. So that's really just temporary and it's only if they do construction, and that's something that township would prepare the easement language and you could have, review it and have, or have your attorney review it, and there's no cost, obviously, to the, you for that. Um, but it's something that the township typically looks upon, um, you know, favorably when, um, there's gonna be future roadwork on this street, uh, in front of the home.
So, uh, the, the, there's a, um, it's another, with, with, with the easement, I mean, of course, I would, I would, uh, agree to the easement. But the buyer, the buyer that's, uh, I'm in contract with, they're, they're locked into an interest rate up, up until August third. Uh, so if, we would, we would, we would like to close before the third of August. Uh, I don't know how the, the procedure with the easement. How long would that take?
I'm, I'm, I don't even, you're gonna have a resolution to this, correct?
Yeah, I, I, the resolution's gonna be considered, uh, on August eleventh.
Okay.
I think you're gonna have to push that because even if you have an approval tonight, it won't be, uh, memorializing till the eleventh of August, and I, there's a good chance in that timeframe, the, um, hopefully that the, the easement, um, too could be resolved.
Okay.
Now, I don't, I don't know if it's under contract, Jim, but if that causes any issues, if there's no easement on the property currently and it's.
Well, it, 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 it has not changed hands yet, so it's still his house, so he could sign the easement documents. So, Mr. Fuller, that, that easement line, the temporary easement's acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
How much, how much, how much, uh, footage are we, you know, I'm, I'm just curious. How much footage?
I believe it's ten feet across the front of the property.
Oh, okay, ten foot back.
Yeah.
Setback. Okay, no, no, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Yep, and then you'll be required to get any building permits that are necessary for the garage conversion. I assume that.
Yes, yes. Yes, can I, can I, can I start that process tomorrow?
Okay.
Okay.
So we gotta get the approval tonight, sir.
Okay.
Let's put, put the car, the car.
Okay.
No, you're looking good, but you're not over the finish line yet. Are there any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public portion and I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application.
All the same.
Call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller, your application's been approved.
Thank you, Chair, uh, uh, Chair members. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck with the sale.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number ten, twenty-two dash CB dash forty-six V, Stella Lee?
Hello, hi, this is Stella.
Hello, Miss Lee, could you raise your right hand? I need to swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Stella Lee, six hundred Maple Avenue, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Uh, I would like to, uh, install a six-foot privacy fence in the backyard.
Mr. Hinterstein, could you go over the, uh, site impact for this particular application?
Similar to the last case, we, we do, we are looking for a five-foot temporary construction easement, uh, along Lakeview Avenue. I think there may be some future plans to do some work uh, on both Lakeview Avenue and Maple Avenue, so again, we would look for temporary construction. temporary construction easement on both frontages, because this is a corner property. And uh, and there's, there's a good chance there're gonna be some future roadwork there. Again, it, it would be temporary, just during the construction uh, in case they need to encroach on the property, uh, five feet from the property line. And uh, that's one item. And the second item is, is because the corner isn't a traditional ninety-degree intersection on your side of the street, it's a little bit more of an acute angle. It makes it a little bit difficult to see as the traffic's coming down. Um, so my suggestion was, is that after your first forty-two feet of your fence that you're proposing, it's to articulate it slightly and angle it back so that it actually comes back um, an additional two feet from where you show it. So that it's seventeen feet back, instead of fifteen feet back from that property line. And this way you will uh, help, I think, with that site visibility along uh, Lakeview Avenue.
Okay. So in other words, um, instead of our original plan of sixteen feet, I move it back to sixty feet from Lakeview? It'll be okay?
No, what, so.
Is that what you were saying?
Basically, the, we have your fence located near the house is fine. And you can go forty-two feet out from the house as you start running down Lakeview Avenue. But then after the first forty-two feet, you wanna step the fence back slightly, view that angle a little bit, so that at the end of the fence, where it meets your neighbor's property line, yes, to the rear, instead of fifteen feet back, it's seventeen back in that corner.
Okay, now, um, I don't understand about the forty-two feet from the, from the house? From the, from the back of the house or the front of the house?
We got a survey here that.
The forty-four feet, is it from, from um, from Maple Avenue or is it from the house?
No, this is really just all about Lakeview Avenue, so you see how you have your fence starting at that walkway? In the back of your house?
The walkway?
You show the fence nineteen feet back, correct?
Right.
From Lakeview Avenue property line?
Yes, that's uh, that's near the AC unit.
Right, right.
About the paper.
Then, if you go fur- further to the end of the property, it's shown as fifteen feet, correct?
Yeah, I can move it to seventeen, no, no problem.
Right, so if you want, you could just move it that back corner to seventeen and put it in a straight line. Or you could go forty-two feet and then angle it to the seventeen-foot mark, is all I was saying. Either way, it's fine with me, as long as that back corner is seventeen and it's on a on a straight line, that's perfectly acceptable, so you go from nineteen to seventeen instead of nineteen to fifteen.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's a straight line, so I, the, the point, I didn't understand was about this forty-two feet.
That's okay.
So, so um, no problem, I can move it from uh, nineteen and then the corner seventeen, no problem.
Correct.
And you're talking about a six-foot privacy fence, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we can do that, sure.
And, are you okay with the five-foot temporary construction easement?
Uh, what, I, I don't understand that either, what is the five-foot easement?
The, the township plans to do some roadwork, maybe uh, curbs, uh, work on the streets. They would have to step onto your property, uh, so giving them a five-foot temporary easement during the construction uh, would allow them to step onto your property.
Oh, no problem, yeah.
If they, if they hurt any grass or any shrubs, they'll re- restore that. And once the construction is done, the easement's over.
Oh, no problem, no problem.
Okay, any other comments or questions from anyone else on the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public portion have any comments or questions about this application? Miss Buckley?
No one chairman.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public portion and I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Sure ma'am.
Uh, what, what's going to happen now? Can, uh, we are going to receive a, a letter or something?
Let's get through the vote first ma'am, and then we'll answer all your questions at that point, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Calfish, Colerole?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
There hey, Daca?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Miss Lee, to answer your question, uh, your application has now been approved as amended uh, with Mr. Hinterstein. We will memorialize this decision at our next meeting on Ele- August eleventh. You don't need to be present for that, but that document will be mailed to you and you'll need that document to get your permits.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome ma'am, good luck.
Everyone.
Okay, let's move on to item number eleven, twenty-two dash ZB dash fifty-eight V. And that's uh, NYS MSA Limited Partnership Verizon Wireless. Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, Mr. Chairman Richard Schneider of the law firm of Vogel, Chait, Collins and Schneider on behalf of the applicant. I can do this very concisely, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but I'll give the, hopefully, the abbreviated version. We appreciate that. Um, matter before you tonight is a request for an interpretation under both the municipal land use law in section sixty-four oh nine of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act. Uh, summarily, uh, approximately thirty years ago Verizon obtained approval to construct a wireless communication facility at the water tank located on the subject property. That approval granted them the right to install twelve antennas. Uh, more recently, back in two thousand seventeen, the number of antennas was reduced to nine as a, pursuant to a approval that actual, uh, an interpretation that was granted by this board. Uh, due to technological reasons, the applicant is now seeking to increase the number of antennas back to the original authorized twelve antennas. Uh, critically, for purposes of this application, none of the new antennas or additional related appurtenances will increase the height of the existing antennas, they will all remain at the existing maximum height. There is no change to the ground equipment located at the subject property. And all other conditions remain in full force in effect. Most significantly, there's no variance approval that is required in conjunction with this matter. Therefore, summarily, under the municipal land use law, because we are not increasing the height of the structure by ten feet, by more than ten percent, in fact, we're not increasing it at, at all. And because we're not increasing the compound bo- beyond twenty-five hundred square feet or the width of the structure, we qualify under the municipal land use law. And for the reasons more comprehensively detailed in our application, we meet all of the requirements of the uh, federal uh, statute sixty-four oh nine, and for those reasons, uh, concisely, we would ask for your approval to grant the requested interpretation based on the plan submitted.
And Mr. Cahill, they have also submitted uh, the requisite uh, proof that the structure can handle the new antennas and that these new antennas will satisfy the radio frequency standards of the United States.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the plans as well and I agree with the statements made that it does not increase height. And the only recommendation I have is if you grant the request that it be uh, subject to all prior conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Any other members of the board have any questions for this application? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one chairman.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public portion and make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Calfish, Colerole?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hey, Daca?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider, we will memorialize this in our next meeting on August eleventh.
Thank you, good seeing you, John.
Bye.
Good night, sir. Okay, let's move on to item number twelve, twenty-two dash ZB dash twenty-nine V. VJ Singha?
Mr. Singhal or Mr. Arch, are you present?
Uh, I am present, uh, thank you, uh, members of the board and board professionals, my name is Tim Arch, I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, I'm here representing VJ Singhal, who is also present. Um, we are asking for uh, variance relief um, for four forty-six Second Street uh, for the purpose of building a uh, single-family home on uh, on the lot, the lot is rather uh, uh, small, it's undersized. There are some existing variances for a lot area, um, for lot width, lot depth and lot frontage, those are existing. Uh, we are not doing anything to uh, to modify those, those are the constraints of the lot. We are asking for variances for building coverage, side yard um, setback, uh, rear yard setback and um, uh, encroachment of a uh, accessibility ramp uh, into the rear yard, although that may have been um, uh, that may not be needed based on our redesign, but I'm not positive, but just be on the safe side. Uh, I'm mentioning that as well. A little bit of background, this is a, uh, when we initially put the application in, we had one set of plans and based on Mr. Hinterstein's review and the township professionals' review, we actually revised those plans and uh, the new revisions. Um, I think uh, significantly address any of the issues that Mr. Hinterstein uh, had uh, on it, um, I don't wanna uh, uh, I wanna keep the uh, the, the pattern of efficiency tonight, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, so I'm gonna move on to our first witness, who is uh, uh, Mr. VJ Singhal, uh, I would ask that he be sworn in uh, to testify.
Mr. Singhal, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address please.
VJ Singal, two sixty-two Pinelli Drive, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Singhal, uh, you're the owner of the property, correct? And you wanna, and you wanna build a house on the property?
Yes.
And uh, this is gonna be a, a, a multi-generational house, correct? How many people live in it?
So, my dad, who is ninety-three, is going to live with me, then I, myself live with me, and I have a handicapped daughter, which is twenty-two-year-old, uh, primarily I'm making that house to improve her quality of life.
Okay, and that's your daughter there with you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and what's her name?
Uh, Pooja Singal.
Okay. Uh, and I understand that she has a medical condition and that's uh, primarily the reason that you're, that you're that you've designed the house the way that you have, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit what, what the medical condition is that she has and uh, and uh, what the resulting symptoms are?
Uh, she born with uh, some uh, very, very rare disease which uh, like a lot of people has not seen. Uh, it's called epidermolysis ballosa, which uh, forms a blister on, on her entire body. Uh, without being, doing anything, you can see that uh, she has the uh, dressing wrapped up on entire her body. So she's like completely on the wheelchair, like uh, zero mobility. She cannot eat anything, she cannot drink anything, she cannot talk, she cannot walk. So from last five years, we were looking the lot of houses, but we couldn't find anything which caters her need uh, in the wheelchair. So then somebody suggested that we should build the, the house according to her need. I'm almost living in Piscataway over twenty years, so I love the town, so I want to be remain in the town.
Thank you, VJ, and, and so part of the, it's, it's a not mince words, it's a rather large accommodating house, but partly that's because you need to accommodate a, a wheelchair and somebody helping her out um, pushing the wheelchair as well, because if she makes any contact, uh, it can be uh, very painful, is that correct? If she makes contact with walls or scrapes against anything?
So her condition is uh, described a uh, even fragile than butterfly. So if little bit for, like fraction can cause the blistering on her body uh, which can be filled with the blood or water.
Okay. And so um, the variances that we're asking for is really to accommodate the, the uh, the size of the interior of the house in order to accommodate your daughter, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Singhal, uh, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Singhal at this moment.
Anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Singhal? Okay, you put on your next witness?
Uh, our next witness is Mr. John Dupont, uh, he is our uh, engineer as well as he's a uh, certified professional planner or licensed professional planner.
Dupont, could you raise your right hand? Swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
I do.
Your name and address please.
Uh, I'm sorry, you say credentials?
Uh, your name and address and then credentials.
Okay, Jo- John P. Dupont, seven-five-six Jackson Road, Stewartsville, New Jersey. So I am, I am a professional engineer, I have a BS in civil engineering from University of Hartford. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as a certified civil engineer as well as a professional planner. Um, I've served for the Borough of Carteret as a planner and zoning board, uh, engineer and planner for the past twenty-three years.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Dupont could be. Qualifications are fine, please proceed, Mr. Arch.
Uh, Mr. Dupont, if you can please just uh, uh, take us through the uh, sort of the revised uh, plan and sort of touch upon the uh, the variances that we're hitting, uh, briefly, please.
I will, if uh, if I could share my screen?
Please do.
Okay, you see the cover sheet now?
Yes.
I'm gonna try to go. I'm sorry, you're, there we go. So, very briefly, you've heard, this is your seeing sheet number two of our set. Um, and basically it's the existing house, right? So there's an existing house on the property, as you heard, with a detached garage. Several variances currently exist. You have a lot area, lot width, lot depth, front yard setback as well as side yard setbacks. The lot's currently zero-point-three acres, so it is in fact undersized. So as we looked to this project, the applicant now, I'm showing you sheet three. If you like, you can certainly zoom in. But what the applicant proposes is to demolish the existing dwelling and the garage and reconstruct the new single-family home. Couple of the variances are gonna stay intact, still be a lot area, lot width, lot depth still remain, however, we're pushing this house back to meet the front yard setback. So we're meeting the, the fifty-foot to match the neighborhood. We also are uh, looking at make, improving the side yard setbacks. Currently, one side yard setback is fourteen-point-five feet. We have now improved it up to fifteen-point-one-two, small improvement, but improving nonetheless. The lot's coverage for this proposed home does go above the exceedance, so instead of twenty percent, we're at now twenty-one-point-three percent, so we're a little over. And then the rear setback, instead of being fifty, we're forty-five and a half feet. Um, and that is from the deck. So a couple of things from an engineering standpoint. It's a relatively fat, flat piece of property. Um, this project did in fact increase the impervious coverage by zero-point-zero-four acres. So still a minor, still more to manage project. But as we did the drainage and grain design, we took a good look at the adjacent properties. Now the property to the rear, and I'll show you the exhibit later, the property to the rear is a wooded lot. So a nice thick buffer, no, no issue to the rear. Of both the east and west side, there are single-family homes. Previously, uh, there was runoff to both sides, mainly more to the east, but there was runoff to both. Um, the roof levers weren't collected, the garage wasn't collected, the driveway wasn't collected. In this proposed design now, we are collecting all the roof levers from one-hundred percent of the roof. And we designed a seepage pit. And we graded the proposed driveway to the front. So, we think we've overdesigned it, been really concerned and account for one-hundred percent of the increase. We are uh, reducing significantly the runoff to both adjoining properties, feel we made a, a good improvement with, with respective drainage. Um, now as we still talk about drainage, Mr. Hinterstein had a comment in his review letter that we currently show the proposed seepage pit in the rear of the property. Mr. Hinterstein made a good, made a good uh, suggestion. Move it up front and then tie the overflow into the existing inlet. So we have no problem, we looked at that. That is very reasonable to do, uh, we think we could do that, no problem. So, um, a couple other things in Mr. Hinterstein's letter that I think we should address. Just because we, we wanna make sure we, we address everything. Um, comment one was no problem, comment number two talked about the proposed deck. And Mr. Hinterstein suggested that we shorten the deck up two feet to improve the rear setback. We would like to keep that deck there, we've already reduced the house and reduced the deck. Um, there is a thick wooded buffer that I will show you right now, and this is this sheet, if you can see, is a exhibit not submitted to the board, perhaps we have to mark this sheet?
Yeah, that should be marked as A1 with today's date, and you should supply a paper copy of that to the board for our file.
Okay, so A1, and if you see our properties right here in red, we have it hatched. And you see the large wooden buffer in the rear. So, we feel that there's a sniffing buffer there, there'll be no adverse visual impacts for the two extra feet on that deck. I think that's a, um, that's where you are now, it's a refusal request. You also see on this property, on this exhibit rather, that the existing home was right up against the right of way. It was very, very close to the street. Totally out of character of the neighborhood. This proposed design now, we moved it back to the fifty feet, and now we match the pattern of the neighborhood. And we even talk about the home. The lot's a little smaller, so there's there's restrictions on, and I'm talking simply from engineering right now. Um the lot has restrictions, it has lot lot area, lot depths. And. It, there's a couple of variances that are required, but they're required because there's the reduced size of the lot. This house is certainly in scale with the neighborhood. And we measured both, the intensity of the ordinance is a twenty-five-foot side yard setback, that's the requirement. Well, we designed this house and now placed this house and reduced it, so we do have twenty-five. Well, we actually have fifty feet from our home to the adjoining homes, so we think we meet the intent. Um I'm gonna go back to. What was the grading? So that was the second thing. We will move the dry well, not a problem. Also, Mister Hinterstein talked about a low point on the eastern side of property, right? My cursor is. And there is, there's an existing low point there now. Um water definitely collects there now, and perhaps maybe we sit there, but we are significantly reducing the drainage area to that. And we think it's not gonna be an issue. We're taking more than half the drainage area to that spot and eliminating. So we will sort of look at it, we'll certainly work with your professional staff um and and satisfy them. But we think we've we've addressed that, but we we will certainly work with them if approved. Um and the final thing is that um the the percentage on the lot coverage. Engineering site plan you have in front of you shows twenty-one point three. The architecture plan shows twenty-one point, uh sorry, mine shows twenty-one point one. The architectural plan shows twenty-one point three, so I would say that we'll stick with the twenty-one point three would be the variance. So from an engineering standpoint, it's a pretty simple project, certainly listen to your staff. We can comply with Mister Hinterstein's July twelfth letter. Um we'll gladly work with your staff on the on the drainage. And from an engineering standpoint, that's all I have. I'll be back later as a planner, but I think from engineering, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, you may wanna see if Mister Hinterstein has any comments on that.
Yeah, I was about to say that. Henry, could you um address the statement by Mister Dupont?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over, so a couple of comments that weren't addressed, and that's, I assume you don't have any issue with the. Us writing the attachment right-of-way, uh dedication, slope easement, in conformance with, uh I guess. Improvement plans that are that are already, I think, developed for that road. Also, we believe.
We we have absolutely no, no concern, no no problem that we.
I can actually, i- if I can, I could actually address that. I believe those have already actually been uh dedicated and recorded.
And what about the installation? And well, I think you're not gonna have a choice about the installation of the curb and the sidewalk, I think that's an ordinance.
We agree to that.
So, okay, I think that really is, and you're willing to work with us on that low spot. Yeah, if you're, everything else is fine.
Any other members of the board have any questions for this uh Mister Dupont? Hearing none, let's move on to your next witness.
Okay, Mister Dupont, if you can just uh stop sharing your screen, and our next witness is uh Mister Mark Marcial, he is our architect.
Good evening.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir. Mark Marcel, M-A-R-C-I-L-L-E, five-zero-five Main Street, Metatcha, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh if you can just go over your credentials briefly and uh.
Licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and four. My license is in good standing, and I've testified before numerous boards.
Mister Chairman, that seems sufficient. Proceed, Mr. Arch.
Uh Mister Marcial, if you can uh please just uh let us know uh the features of the house. And uh and briefly take us through why it is that they're uh required for the specific uh design and circumstances of uh. Mister Singh Hall and his daughter.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, understanding the lot's a little undersized, and the the house is a little bit larger than what would be allowed on this lot. We took great care in trying to reduce the visual, the visual scale of the home, as seen from the street. We kept the roof lines as low as possible. The overall roof height is just under twenty-eight feet. Uh we reduced the width of the front of the house by pushing the garage, the front wall of the garage back from the front of the house. To make the front of the house appear narrower and therefore appear smaller, we introduced the front porch. Uh also reducing the visual uh scale of the house and push the second floor walls back from, you know, further back to the front four walls. Uh front first floor walls, again, in order to reduce that scale. Uh the interior layout, be happy to answer any questions, but we took great care in trying to. Make the common areas uh spacious enough to accommodate uh the required wheelchair access. So we have some sort of turning circles shown on the plane, just to give you an idea of of the spaces we were trying to work with in terms of of flowing through the house. But certainly be happy to answer any questions regarding the layout.
Thank you, Mister Marcial. I I think I'll leave it to the board to see if they have any specific questions.
Sure. Henry, any uh concerns?
No, I think the pared-down version of the house that reduced the coverage uh was was adequate. I think the deviation now is is relatively uh menomous in acre. And uh definitely better than the the previous uh submitting.
Yeah, by by substantial amount. Um any other members of the board have any questions? Hearing none, Mr. Arch.
Uh thank you. I'd ask uh Mister uh Dupont uh to uh now uh briefly opine uh his uh planning testimony. For the uh sake of a complete record.
I will, I will certainly try to keep it brief, but so from a planning standpoint, we are requesting three new variances. Lot of coverage, side yard setback, and a rear yard setback. We take a look at the first variance, lot of coverage, we feel we can support that by the C-one harsh case. As per the MLU, we're dealing with a piece of property which is undersized in width and depth to the zone. The property currently has a dwelling on it and detached garage with numerous existing violations. The size of lot clearly impacts our ability to provide the required lot coverage. The existing undersized lot, the existing lot is significantly smaller than the zone allows, but it does exist. And if the lot was consistent with the zone, our fourth dwelling would be far below the twenty percent coverage. The next two variances, we feel we could obtain the side yard rear yard using the flexible C-two analysis. Under flexible C-two, we must establish that we're dealing with a specific piece of land. The purposes of the MLU will be advanced. The variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and the benefits will substantially outweigh the detriments. And the variances will not substantially impact the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the master plan. Again, we mentioned a lot size will impact both the side and rear yard setbacks. The proposed dwelling isn't out of character with the neighborhood and size, but rather the lot size is a contributing factor to all variances. So in order to approve the side and rear variances, we need to look at the positive and negative criteria. Positive criteria advances several purposes of the MLU. Purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate land use and development. Purpose C, provide adequate light air and open space as we provide the intent fifty foot between our dwelling and the neighbors. And purpose I, to promote a desirable visual uh environment and creative design. We are taking the one home that didn't really match, it was too far forward, didn't match the character of the neighborhood. We reassessed it, and now we got a new structure. So we're meeting the intent of the ordinance with respect to light air and open space. Uh we are improving the visual environment. Clearly, we are in scale with the zone. We are proposing to construct a single-family dwelling, which is permitted. Our project will improve over what is there now as a better zoning alternative. We are improving the drainage of each adjacent lots. And the rear of the property does butt against a heavily wooded area, so we feel there'll be no visual negative impacts. Uh we are gonna grant the five-foot-wide dedication up in front of for the town. So special reason, we also have that, we've heard the applicant's story and why he's building this home for him and his family. The dwelling isn't oversized, it's built with a very specific purpose. Negative criteria, as far as that goes, I don't see any negative impacts. We're proposing permitted use. We are meeting and in we are in scale with local grounds. We're eliminating existing violations. Our project will certainly not have they any negative impacts on surrounding properties. In fact, we are improving drainage in adjacent properties again. Uh there'll be no substantial detriment to the public good, no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I feel the board can grant the approval of this application based on the fact that the benefits of granting the variances requested will substantially outweigh any detriments. This project will not have any detriments to the public good. The MLU will clearly be advanced. And the intent of the zone plan and his only words will not substantially be impaired. That is my abbreviated version.
Thank you, Mister Dupont.
Thank you, Mister Dupont. Any members of the board have any questions for Mister Dupont? Hearing none, uh Mister Arch, surprise?
Uh thank you. Um I'll again, I'll be very quick. Um uh I ask that you look at this uh uh favorably. Um it is, uh I hope that the speed in which we presented it does not undermine the significance that this has to. Mister uh Singh Hall and to his daughter, and I would hope that you would grant us um that. Uh the additional two feet on the the porch that we are asking for and look favorably on the application.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Anyone on the board? Any comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No, and Chairman.
Okay, hearing that, the public portion is closed, and I would make a motion.
Excuse me?
Let me just make one comment.
Go, John.
This is the kind, this is the kind of case where you have to make a balance between your rules and the neighborhood. I think they prove the case, the house will fit the neighborhood much, much better than the existing.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application as is, including the letting the deck remain as presented by the applicant. Um can I get a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you, Kalphos. Got a good call?
Mister Weissman?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Mister Heyedaka?
Yes.
Mister Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. And the applicant requested that I bring in a resolution tonight, uh so we will. Present that to the board, too. You've already voted on it, so it's all good. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do uh do well with your daughter, and we have nothing but prayers and hopes for you both.
Thank you, and we have to put a uh elevator also in the house because her mobility is zero. That's why it take even little more space, so.
Understood.
Thank you, appreciate.
No, we appreciate it. God bless both of yous.
Thank you so much.
Let's move on to item number fourteen, which is twenty-two ZB dash fifty, and that's Kingsbridge, two thousand and five LLC.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. This is uh Jim Spinarkle from Waters McPherson McNeil, I'm the attorney for the applicant. Um I can give you the quick, you know, the the spirit of efficiencies we've been doing tonight. I can summarize and give you uh introduce the application, and just uh for the board's benefit, we have our architect and uh engineer who are prepared to testify as needed. Um so essentially, this is a property located at eighty Kingsbridge Road. The owner is essentially working on a tenant fit out for a new tenant coming in. Um they're proposing to basically use it as uh permitted use, you know, uh warehouse, distribution. Uh and the main feature of the the site plan, we're here for uh preliminary and final site plan approval. The main item that we're working for the board's approval on here is to install two loading docks and to make some adjustments to the parking lot. Right around where the loading docks are to facilitate trucks coming in and out. Uh this is as noted, it's a permitted use in the zone. Um the, we're not adding any square footage to the building or anything like that. The building's about thirty-one thousand square feet or just shy of that. Um and the applicant, uh like I said, it would be ideas to have the setup for a new tenant that'll be coming in hopefully later this year.
Uh you can go ahead and call your first witness.
Certainly, uh we've uh our architect, Paul Newman. Paul, you're on, I believe.
Mister Newman, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Uh your name and address, please.
Uh Paul Newman from eleven oh nine Mount Kimball Road, Harding, New Jersey.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mister Spinarkle.
Um Mister Newman, to the extent for the board's benefit, could you just give them quickly your qualifications?
Sure. Uh I have a Bachelor of Architecture from NJIT. I've been a licensed architect, stayed in New Jersey for thirty-five years. And I've appeared in numerous boards, including Piscataway previously.
You can proceed, Mister uh.
Thank you.
Uh so Mister Newman, maybe the easiest way to do this would be if you could just take the board through the site plan and application from an architectural perspective. And to the extent applicable from the architectural perspective, touch on any of the comments from Mister Chadwick. Uh his letter or the other township letter from Mister Hinterstein.
Yes, uh it it's it's fairly simple from the architectural perspective. The existing building uh is on the corner of Kingsbridge Road where it does the the curved loop. Uh at present, the rear area is used as a warehouse storage area. There's a physical therapy, doctor's office, front left. And the area, the primary area shown in orange, has been empty for some time. It used to be a fitness center. And that's the area that the new tenant would like to take. Uh they have requested a couple of loading docks for uh miscellaneous deliveries. And that's what we're proposing to do in the front lower right-hand corner right here. Um this is actually a view of that corner space. There's this, there's a transformer located at this location. And we would actually put the two loading dock areas in this area right here. We're proposing standard loading docks, eight-by-eight garage doors. Uh that will be basically dark bronze to sort of blend into the building. No other change to the facade at all. Um the the work itself to do those uh two loading docks is relatively simple. Um there, the base of the of floor slab is actually already up several feet because there's a a slope. Leading up to the side of the building, so once we remove the dirt area at this space, it actually levels it out at loading dock level. The uh site engineer will will detail further about the work that's being done on that area. But from an architectural perspective, that's really what we're doing. Everything else on the um. Site plan has been planned out by the site engineer who will follow to and to create a a proper loading area at this space. That's really it from an architectural perspective. Simple.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about this uh applicant, about this testimony, I should say?
Mister Chairman?
Um yes.
Quick, quickly, I I may have missed it. So the entire building, other than that left-hand portion that's being used by the existing chiropractor, gonna be used for warehousing?
Uh correct. The the rear area is presently used as storage and warehouse area. And uh we're looking to make this area in the front right also. The the tenant will not be solid warehouse, however, there is a multiple use to it. There are some offices, some. Um other type of area and some storage area. It's just that because of the activity they do, they need a uh regular deliveries that can come on the back of a truck.
Then the area to the left is gonna remain as it's been used currently, correct?
At the moment, yes.
Anything else, Henry?
That's it right now. Okay.
Any other members of the board? Oh, yes, Steve Weissman. Do we know what's gonna be warehoused here?
I'm sorry, can you assist me?
Yeah, do we know what's gonna be warehoused?
I'm not sure the exact area of it. Um the the tenant is working with a different architect for the interior performance. So I'm not sure how much of it. They need a storage area and a loading-unloading area. But it's not a hundred percent warehouse.
What would they be storing, by the way? What what commodity?
Um it's a, it's a bio uh life safety company, so. It's small, and you know, it's small um quantities of things, smaller boxes, as I understand it.
But well, no chemicals?
No.
Anyone else have any questions? Mister Spinarkle, you can put your next witness on.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Our next witness is our project engineer, Mario Anelli. Uh Mario, I think you're, I saw you on.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good evening. I need to swear your word. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
My name is Mario Iannelli. Um I work for Guberry. Uh my address is six hundred Parsippany. Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, and I'm the manager of the Land Development Services at our company.
Thank you.
Um to give you a benefit of my qualifications, uh I graduated from NJIT in nineteen ninety-three. Uh with my bachelor's in civil engineering, uh my master's in civil engineering in two thousand and one. I've uh appeared in front of numerous boards. I've been a licensed civil engineer in.
Your credentials are fine, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um so I I think the best way to do to do this real quick is just to pick up on. And I'm gonna be sharing my screen, and right now I'm only sharing things that have been submitted, so it's my understanding, I don't, I should not have to mark it.
It was submitted with the original package?
Yes.
It does not need to be separately marked.
So I just, uh I just wanna make sure you're seeing the right screen. I was getting nervous because you have multiple screens here. You see the drawing up here right now?
We see a drawing.
Okay, great. So uh just to give an overview, um the campus, like it said, uh so it was mentioned by uh. By the architect, is Kingsbury's Road actually wraps ninety degrees. Uh the site currently, this is the existing building. Uh, the site currently, this is the existing building I'm highlighting on C one oh three. There's multiple entrances to the site, there's three along I would say the north side of Kingsbridge and there's one on the south, also call it southeast corner. Um, the revisions that we're talking about doing here is basically uh, when they, we were looking at a place for, to place a loading dock, uh, this was a natural location because the grade outside is almost exactly what we need, it was a little off, but almost exactly what we needed to create a recessed loading dock to give the proper four feet, uh, for the loading dock along the building. So, uh, what we wanted to then do is look at, you know, the type of truck, which is we designed it for WB fifty. And what that did is when we had looked at the access and out of the, uh, in and out of the, uh, the site, we would said, okay, well, we're going to have to modify some curb islands to make sure we can efficiently move around, they can, uh, move around the site safely and with the existing parking and not cause any problems, uh, you know, with conflicts with existing parking stalls or traffic, uh, maneuvering. So basically, what I'm going to show you real quick is what we did here is we looked at the vehicles, this is exiting. This is entering, so basically the vehicles would come in, uh, WB fifty, they would be able to drive in. And basically, we eliminated the parking in this area here, so, uh, WB fifty can pull in and back into the two, one of the two spaces. What that required us to do on, on, on the way out is basically just going to go in around, so what that did when we looked at it is we basically said, okay, we need to shave a portion of the island off on one side, which we lost two parking spaces, we had to shave a little bit of this island off. And we then had to, um, add the loading docks and we had to stripe out a couple of parking spaces to allow for safe and efficient maneuvering of the, uh, of the WB fifty. And so, one of the things we noticed too is we're going to increase impervious coverage ever so slightly to put the loading docks in. So to try to address, you know, stormwater management and, um, and uh, impervious coverage through land cover management, we actually increased the islands. So we, we end up net reducing impervious coverage by the project by roughly, I think it's sixty-three or sixty-five square feet. So what we're trying to do is basically, uh, create a safe maneuvering, you know, for the truck while not impacting or adversely impacting stormwater. The only real change in, uh, maneuvering is that this is a two-way aisle right now. They would, you know, this has got plenty of room to actually accommodate two-way, but to be when the trucks are in the loading dock, they would be sticking out, so we're going to make this a do not enter and basically make it a, one, that direct the traffic around the, where the loading dock is going to occur. You can see we left a lot of room to make sure that this would safely operate. So in essence, what we're going to do is we're going to lose, uh, thirty-five spaces to accommodate this, but we're still exceeding the requirement, uh, by quite a bit, so, uh, the required number of spaces would be seventy and the proposed would still be at two thou, uh, two hundred and eighteen. So from a, from a logistical perspective, um, in a maneuvering perspective, it really has very little impact on the overall site, except the area right in front of the loading dock. Uh, and it also, we've accommodated any necessary traffic maneuvering that we would have to do, I, in our opinion to accommodate these trucks and safely, uh, keep the traffic flowing around the, uh, the loading dock and also to continue to provide the number of spaces, both, uh, standard spaces and handicap spaces. So in general, uh, that's really, we're not exacerbating really anything when it comes to zoning. You know, the impervious cover stays the same, the building's not being modified, the parking is conforming. So in general, all we're doing is basically accommodating some minor site changes to accommodate the WB fifty and just to accommodate the maneuvering of the loading dock. And that's the overview. Um, I believe there was a couple of reports issued. Um, we really don't have any issues with anything in the reports. Uh, there was a question about, uh, the whether the, the, the physical therapy was going to remain, I believe that was addressed during the architect's testimony. Um, the stormwater management I had, I, I believe have addressed by the fact that we are reducing impervious coverage. Um, there was a question about the dry well, um, and basically we have proposed a dry well. Uh, because the, the way the, the way it works out, this actually drains back towards the building, we're going to install a trench drain and we're going to install a dry well that's actually quite oversized. And the one comment was about it, can we send the overflow to the inlet, well, the inlet's quite a distance away. So I like to work with your engineer to maybe figure out maybe a way of, you know, thinking about how to handle this, not having to pipe at a hundred feet, but maybe providing multiple points of discharge and maybe even actually installing a small inlet that will allow it to bubble off because if if we did, if we were able to pitch this loading dock towards the parking lot, we would have. Well, because the finished floor was fixed and the parking lot was fixed, there was really no way to do that. Uh, and if the, we were able to do it, that, that runoff would just simply drain across and go into the gutter, so we're trying to maintain that same approach, but we are pro- pro- proposing a ten-foot diameter, uh, infiltration, uh, just, I'm sorry, seepage pit that's only really catching the area associated with the loading docks. So it's, it's pretty, i- it's, it's got a significant size to area ratio from what we're collecting. Um, all his other comments, I believe, about landscaping. Uh, we're absolutely provide more detail on the landscaping, we will absolutely provide on the replacement trees, I believe we are removing three trees to accommodate these improvements. We will absolutely give him the types and species. Uh, and there was also some other comments about inspecting the curves, both on the street and also on the site. Uh, I've inspected them, I didn't see really any issues, but I have no problem working with the engineer to see if he concurs with that assessment. Um, and I also believe from an engineering perspective, uh, I think the majority of the remaining comments really had to do with the landscaping and we've I'm going to make a commitment tonight that we would provide a detailed landscape plan that would address all, uh, his concerns with, uh, with the species and types and the replacements and the additional street trees that he was requesting and, and other things like that. Uh, there was another report from Mr. Chadwick, I believe, uh, we have no issues with anything in his report. So I'll let that just stand that we will address or comply with that report's requirements. And that's really all I have.
Okay. Starting with Mr. Hinterstein first, are you satisfied with the, the, uh, testimony just given to Henry?
Yeah, for the most part, I don't have concerns about the dry well, again, a concentrated uh, just everything out in that one, uh, location and what that may do in the wintertime. Uh, perhaps together, it can be, um, piped out in the other direction, perhaps with bollers that go out into the water landscape that area before it, uh, maybe then cascades into the parking lot. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm sure the engineer would be more than happy to work with us on that and coming up solution. Um, but the other concern is, is, um, there is still the physical therapy chiropractor component of this building that's remaining. And my concern is, is I don't know if we've moved the handicap spaces further away or it appears that they may have always been in that location, uh, because there is no ramp in the front of the building, so with this portion of the building now being converted to warehouse or warehouse slash office. How does somebody that may need to access the physical therapy slash chiropractor area um, in a wheelchair or with some kind of stability from the ADA spaces to the, um, that side of the building? Um, you know, are they crossing through a functioning warehouse? I mean, that, that's a concern. Um, and then the other concern is, I don't know if we, I imagine that you're in agreement that you're going to comply with the, um state's EV, EV charging station ordinance?
Y- yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, we could, we go back to the ADA aspect of the, and the, um, existing, uh, physical therapy use of the building and how people that need that ramp or need to access the building in a wheelchair or some type of disability, how they're going to get from point A to point B, uh, through that building?
I, I can't really comment on the interior of the building, uh, so what you're saying is if they parked here, they went up this ramp here, they entered here. How would they get here?
Correct.
The entrance, still not to, I've been over there, the entrance is around that circle that Sorry, Jim, Laura Buckley. The entrance to the physical therapy place is where that circle is, all the way to the left of the site. There's no way that you're going to be able to walk through over there, I go there regularly.
You know, we, we've got almost twice the amount of parking required for these uses. As part of the review of the landscaping that I agree with the comments of the expert in Henry. There must be a place that gets handicap spaces closer to the entrance. Without, th- th- there's not going to be any, uh, deficiency of parking resulting from that.
I'm not concerned about the parking, John, I'm concerned that
I would suggest
There's no ramp in that front. Lot of stairs.
Yeah, they may have to put a ramp.
Have to build one, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you make, if the board approves this make it subject to their agreement to comply with the reports and to relocate the handicap spaces
Or a few.
To a reasonable proximity to the entrance.
Right there, I get it, I agree.
Instead of trying to do it at whatever time it is tonight, you know, let them sit down and kind of figure it out.
I'm sure we can figure out a way to accommodate that, I would have to look at it in more detail, but if the board chose to act positively on this application, I would have no problem working with the board professionals to figure that out.
Okay. Any other comments, John?
No.
Okay, any other members of the board have any comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick question. Um, in terms of that too, just I would ask, just for the record too, that obviously the, uh, the physical therapist is a tenant and there is a chance at some point their lease will expire or run out, so if we can just kind of make part of that condition that we do it in a logical way to make it make sense for everybody, obviously.
I'll let people on a bigger pay scale than me make that decision, so we'll figure it out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, any other members of the board have any questions for this uh, expert? Okay, proceed, Mr. Spanarkle. That concludes Summary if you want.
Sure, just a quick
Uh, Mr. Iannelli, could you stop, share your screen?
Oh, I'm really sorry about that.
That's okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Just to briefly summarize, that can, uh, concludes our testimony, uh, for the reasons we provided by the experts tonight. I would ask that the board look favorably upon our application and grant the relief requested.
Thank you. Any members of the board have any comments or questions about this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public, anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, I'd make a motion to approve this application with the comments and testimony that was put forth tonight. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, call roll.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
We will memorialize this at our next meeting in August eleventh.
Thank you very much, everyone, greatly appreciated.
Good night, gentlemen, thank you. Good night, let's move on to item number fifteen, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
First resolution is Rinkes Patel, uh, this application was approved, Mr. Weisman? You're muted, Steve.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Broke up, Jim.
Uh, Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is NYSSA, this was one thirty-five Fleming Street, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Next is twenty-eight Howard Street, which was approved with conditions, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka? Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Mark Canha, Mark, Mark Banha, uh, this application was partially approved and partially denied. Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Uh, those are all the resolutions I have for you, it's because we did Lamori and Sing Hall earlier.
Got you, okay, let's move to item sixteen, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I'd make the motion to adjourn, before we adjourn, I would personally like to thank Laura Buckley for joining us from her vacation. Very dedicated employee and the residents of Piscataway did not know how good they have it with someone like you helping us out, so
Appreciate it.
Everyone have a great night and, uh, we'll talk to you soon, I will not, uh, see you in August, I'm going to be on vacation. But I'm sure you're in good hands with Mr. Weisman.
You're telling me now? Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm going to tell you on the tenth of August. Making real trouble for you.
Enjoy the rest of your week, bye, everybody.
Take care, guys, bye.
Take care.